711. Our first order of business is to nominate a moderator for tonight. So are there any nominations for a moderator?
I would like to nominate Bob Doody as moderator because he's done such a fine job over the years.
Is there a second? Are there any other nominations?
Can we listen?
Is there a motion to close the nomination?
I move to adjourn close nominations.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
All those in favor of Bob Doody?
Aye.
Great, come on up, Bob.
Thank you for your continued support. And thank you all for coming out tonight for this very interesting meeting. First order of business is to... First order of business is to ask the clerk to read the posting of the warrant.
Pursuant to the thin warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Sunderland by posting up a test copy of the same at the town office building, the Sunderland public library, and the Sunderland post house. Working date is 11th before date here of the county superintendent Allen T. Richards, January 3rd, 2012, 10:55.
Thank you. One other order of business. In the past, what we've done is ask that the moderator be able to declare a vote by two-thirds without counting. The regulations say that it must be a counted vote. And what we would like to be able to do is have the moderator determine whether or not a yea or nay vote is by two-thirds. Now, this does not say that it doesn't have to be a counted vote because any seven people in the audience can request that it be a counted vote. Tonight's warrant, there are several articles that will require a two-thirds majority. And by having the moderator, giving the moderator the prerogative of declaring the majority just speeds things up. And it doesn't take away the fact that if someone wants to have a counted vote, we can still count it. So I would like to have a motion somewhere.
We have to pass this.
Oh, okay.
So we are in the morning of the court.
Okay. Okay, so you don't have to vote on this. It's already been passed. It's part of our bylaws. So if somebody is not satisfied with my declaration of a two-thirds vote, seven people raise your hand and then we'll have a vote. Okay. The last thing we need to do is have a motion to dispense with the readings of the motions since you all have copies of them. So just again, saves time.
So...
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now we can get on with the business. Article one.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article one, please.
Okay, any explanation for that? Is there a second?
Second.
Explanation.
This article will allow the authorized supportive selectmen to acquire land as part of our complete streets project for easements on Hadley Road and Old Amherst Road. As you may recall, last year, the town received a grant for $396,000 for complete streets projects. Those projects have been completed with the exception of Hadley Road and Old Amherst Road where we needed to acquire easements from two of the property owners in order to complete the sidewalk extensions. It also appropriates funds to pay for damages at Fair Market Gardens for those properties. And that amount is $2,919 worth of cash.
Any questions? All right. All those in favor of Article one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Article two. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article two.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for Article two. Explanation.
This article will transfer funds from the stabilization account in the amount of Recently, the town received a capital grant for improvements on School Street. So the first phase of that project will be engineering and construction of a manhole on School Street. And the second part of that project is going to be conceptual design for some ADA improvements and sidewalk improvements and traffic calming on School Street.
Any discussion? Since we're moving money from stabilization account, it requires a two-thirds vote. If there's no discussion, are you ready to vote? Okay? All those in favor of Article two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Clerk voted unanimously. Article three.
Mr. Moderator, this time I'd like to move Article three, please.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for Article three. Changes in the bylaws have to be brought before town meeting by the planning board.
So I'm Steve Schneider. I'm the vice chair of the planning board. Dana Roscoe couldn't be with us tonight, so I'll do my best to present this. So I think our first order of business is going to be to recognize that this has been the handout, stapled together, handout picked up in the back, is slightly amended from what was posted. The town council had recommended small wording changes. They are really just clarifications from what was posted previously. So I believe that in order to proceed, it's the first order of business to accept as amended in the handout.
Okay. Okay, so we're amending the zoning bylaws and the only articles that are going to be able to discuss are those in italics, or bold, rather.
Right, they are, all of the new material is marked in directly underlined and on the new definitions. And there are slight wording changes within here that the town council had recommended to what was posted in town offices.
Okay. So that's different from what was posted, therefore, we have to accept them as amended?
Right.
Okay. Are you following us? Okay. All those in favor, are there any discussions?
Can I ask why this was necessary, sir?
Are you asking about the amendments or are you asking about the bill?
Why was it necessary at all?
I'll come to that after we, I thought we should just take care of business before we start discussing what we have, but I'll be happy to do that.
I'll make a motion to amend it.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to accepting the amendments to the bylaw as recommended by town council. And those are either underlined or in bold on the handouts before you. So let me make it clear, we are not going to open up the entire zoning bylaw. We are going to open up just what's in the handout.
I think we're, I thought when I heard Steve saying is that we are going to be discussing the handout that we have tonight and we're accepting the changes in it as opposed to what was posted. Correct. That's what we're going to do.
That's, all we're doing is accepting these changes from what was posted.
With the proposed changes.
Right. And we're not voting on the changes yet. We're just voting on the changes to the changes.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Okay.
Okay, so now we can get to the real question. Okay, so the, we were asked on the planning board to look at our bylaws to see if they, how they might be changed now that the state and the town voted to accept recreational marijuana use. And there are a number of things covered by state regulation that if we do not make any decisions within town, just open up the entire town for cultivation and sales and other such things with marijuana. And so what we don't have in place are a set of guidelines to protect people under certain circumstances. We'll just give some examples, let me give some examples from our meetings of the planning board. We learned about some of the problems in some states such as Colorado and California where some of the marijuana cultivation has produced some problems for neighbors in terms of smells, runoff, lights, other things. And so we don't, we don't have a comprehensive set of rules in place to deal with these issues given that we don't have a set of, the state is just kind of working their way through it. So there's a broad set of allowances now by the state for what can be done. Local towns are allowed to make some restrictive restrictions on those, on those mooses and on those activities, but we don't have anything in place yet. So what we have crafted here is really what I would call stopgap, maybe a little use of that. There's a gap in the laws right now that raises, there might be some issues that people would have concerns about the kinds of things that could happen with big kind of industrial marijuana cultivation, as has occurred in some places where it has been legalized. And so we don't have a very comprehensive way of protecting people's property and neighbors to such uses. So that was our concern and the charge to us was to look at this. We haven't had a lot of time to, on the planning board, to revise the rules. We revised the use table to just recognize some of these uses. So if you look on your handout, you'll see the underlined lines, cultivation of marijuana, marijuana processing, so all these places where you see the underlined things for the use table, those are new definitions that are being put in there. Then we tried to define where various of these activities could take place within town in terms of either residential or, so if you look at the, there's village residential, which is the center of town near 447 and 116 across, rural residential, which is much of town, excuse me, village residential, village center. So village residential, rural residential. And then C1 and C2 are our two commercial districts. So much of what we have put in here is largely restricted to C2, which is in the northeast corner of Sunderland. And part of our thinking in this was not necessarily that this should be the final set of restrictions, but you are only allowed to make things less restrictive at these town meeting hearings. So we put in what are relative, about as restrictive as we could imagine. And then it's open to amendment to make them less restrictive. You can't go the other way at a town meeting. So the reason that the regulations are written as restrictively as they are is just to have something on the books so that we have an opportunity to prevent things from happening in town that maybe we wouldn't like to see happen. So that was the thinking here. There's also a number of these amendments, or part of the amendment is just a set of definitions that go into our definition table. So you see these marijuana cultivator establishment, what do these things mean? These follow largely the state definitions so that, so we have those definitions in our bylaws. So that's, that's a quick summary of how we got to where we are right now. I'm happy to try to answer questions or I don't know if the select board wants to add anything since I think we were asked by the select board to come up with some planning board, zoning bylaws. As I said, I'm happy to try to answer some questions around this or try to spell out some more of our thinking about what we're doing. I do, I see this as something we wanted, be developing a more comprehensive look and see where the best places are for cultivation, what restrictions we want to happen on here.
If we don't do anything, then what?
Well, then, then we don't have any restrictions about where in town some of these things may take place that we might want to restrict to certain parts of town. We don't, the state rules and definitions at the moment, I don't think are very clear about some of the issues that have been raised by, in other states about some of the, some of the problems of smell and...
Steve, can you speak into the mic, please?
Oh, sorry. Look at one direction and speak in the other. But so some of the, some of the concern is that in other states where they have not come up with clear sets of restrictions for what kind of activities might cause problems for neighbors, neighbors in the town. So there, smell, smell has been raised as a big issue, runoff, lights, other things that we might want to make sure don't, don't make your life in town less pleasant as a result of these things coming in. I think they are coming in and just want to make sure we do it properly.
Peter.
Peter Biggarr in North Main Street. I just want to make sure I understand that what I think is being proposed here is actually correct. And what I think is being proposed is that we have a, we have two different commercial districts, C1 and C2. C2 is a very small area that essentially is Route 63, a little bit where it goes from Leverett into Sunderland and then right into Monique.
Correct.
And I think we created that district because we had to deal with adult businesses and we needed a place, we need to have the ability to have them in town, but we wanted them not to be in the center of town. And so we created the C2 up on Route 63. And so for much of the marijuana, possible marijuana related businesses, this would put them also only in C2, possibly with a special permit. So is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then what this seems to say is possible to put in C1, which is our general commercial district, which is quite a bit in town along the main streets, is a retail establishment of less than 2,000 square feet or a testing type of laboratory or something like that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess the only, the question I had was with the, and there were restrictions on where the retail establishment could go in terms of not being within a certain distance of a school or a church or a daycare center.
That's correct. And those, that language isn't there at all.
And I think that's the gist of this proposal. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess the only thing that I wasn't clear on with this is when you say that it could go in a, I think it says in here, a building, this should be a retail outlet, it could go in a building of less than 2,000 square feet. Does that mean that you could have a building that has several different commercial establishments in them and only one of which might be wanting to sell marijuana stuff? Does that mean that that part of the building would be okay if it was less than 2,000 or the whole building, which might include other businesses, would have to be less than 2,000? Because it says building and that, you know, I wasn't sure if that was what the intent was.
You know, that's a very good point. It's a subtlety here, I think, in, for any business because this, if you look, it's not just, we have retail stores of different sizes. I believe the intent, and this goes back predates my tenure on the board, I believe the intent is really for the store square footage, not the entire building. So if we have a multiple retail business building, that refers to the individual store.
Because I, in my own view is that we ought to, how shall I say this? We ought to be someplace not hostile and not recruiting such establishments, but we should realize that there are, we're going to be around and that there are revenue implications. And if we can do it properly, which I think you were trying to do, then maybe we can get a benefit in the long run and at least this seems to forestall any bad situations in at least the near term.
That's our point.
Okay, thank you.
Will?
The notes have, you know, what Peter just referred to, most property lines, a little childcare center or church. Are those things defined in our definitions in the town, listed definitions, or is there a state definition or are these, I mean, daycare centers, childcare centers, that one that's licensed or is it like where, you know, what's the definition of the church? Where do we vote? So when somebody wants to come in and do this in town, how do they know where the churches are, where the daycare centers are, so they all try to put it someplace and then find out they can do it there?
Yeah, that's a, it's an interesting point. I don't think it's come up when I've been on the planning board or zoning board in particular. But it's, you raise a good point. I don't know that it's defined in any clear way. I think it was sort of a, it's thought to be sort of general knowledge, so I'm just going to, sorry, Dana is not here to be able to more clear about it, but I think you're right, that should be spelled out more clearly.
So I'm just looking at the definitions of, in our zoning laws already, and they differentiate between building and building complex. So a building complex, or sorry, a business complex, which is a building or group of buildings located on one parcel of land which houses more than one business, but a building is just the building.
Okay. So I think if you dig into our, I hate to say it, but if you dig into our zoning bylaws enough, you'll find a lot of these little, little things that are open to some level of interpretation, often calling on the zoning board, asking calls back there, to try to determine the intent. We've had these kind of discussions before. I think, I think you're right to worry about that a little bit, but I think the zoning board is the one to be the arbiter for these things.
Good question. Could we clarify that to substitute a retail space instead of a building? Because, you know, we might all understand that the intent of it is a retail space, but six months from now, a year from now, everybody forgets this. And, you know, there are tax revenues for the town. And that's the intent of a retail space less than 2,000.
Okay, so what I don't want to do is to, I'm pretty certain that the intent for the use tables, we don't want to get giant box buildings. So that's why there's this definition in terms of square footage of buildings. Now, in terms of, the spaces within an existing building, I think now that's why we're getting into this little difference, difference of understanding. So a retail store...
You would leave the elements of buildings, but for the less than 2,000 square foot, for retail space.
And now, are you trying to make more general statement than just for marijuana retailer?
Just for marijuana retail. Where it says, where it says building 2,000 square feet or less. I think the intent is you want the space that sells marijuana for less than 2,000 square feet.
I think what, I agree with you. I think that's, that's our main intent, although I do think implications of having more than one retailer, if you've been to York County recently, in the same space might pose some concerns also. So I, I'm a little reluctant to, if you're proposing an amendment, I would not object to it, but I do think there's going to be complications about multiple businesses in the same retail space, just given what I've seen happen locally in these regions. I mean, just, just in terms of the volume of business going through.
So basically what you're saying then is the intent of the bylaw as proposed by the planning board is to have each marijuana establishment that sells marijuana to have a separate building?
I don't think that was actually considered one way or the other by the planning board. So that's why I've said I wouldn't object to a change like Bruce is proposing, but I don't, I haven't thought through the implications, so I'd love to deep into that and not, not having thought through that.
Russell Lane, Russell Lane. Although I'm old, I still maintain a medical license in the Commonwealth Massachusetts. I'm puzzled to think that we're talking about marijuana, but are you held that we had poked any marijuana growing in the town, sir?
We haven't poked it, but the state has. And so it's, it's, basically, we have to decide if we want to be more restrictive than the state at this point.
The Commonwealth has led the way?
Yes.
Okay. State of my life.
Leslie Burrow. I'm concerned about the way the school and I want some protection for our wonderful community at North Star, which is a non-school, and I don't know how to...
We, when we were writing this language...
Can you repeat the question?
She's, the concern is about what, North Star and was, whether it is considered a school, as a, as a non-school, I guess you called it. But I, I think under our, under our not very definite guidelines, we would consider that a school. So I'm not, you don't like that, so please, please speak.
It only runs four days a week. It's specifically not a school. And so young people, whether they're in that kind of situation or just have some club or some gaming place they go to or whatever, that is a location, that maybe you need to think about protection for those kinds of groups that don't fit under church or school category.
So the state said church or school and I, we're just basically copying that language, I think, in our bylaws. And so I guess, what would, if it's not a school, then how do we, how would you add it to the bylaws if we were going to?
I would like to see some, some protection for young people who are gathered for, for a formal purpose or something that doesn't limit it to school. I mean, everywhere, I don't know, Girl Scouts or something. I mean, it needs to go a little broader in what it protects young people.
I'm just looking for good words to, to use. Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to think about it. Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to think of what are the right words we could insert that would be general enough, but not over this specific area. Can I ask Steve Crowell to, because I think he might be able to help us with the zoning board. Could ask, Steve Crowell might be able to comment on this?
Well, I'm Steve Crowell, I'm the chairman of the zoning board. I think it's important to note here that we're proposing to be very restrictive on where these sort of retail activities or cultivation activity of marijuana will occur. And each and every one of those rare instances, it says SP, which means it requires a special permit from the zoning board. And the zoning board would look at this very carefully. We have a lot of discretion. You're talking about definitions of the North Star. You know, that's, you know, my, my feeling would be, when we looked into it, we would find out that, that would, yes, that would be a school, and that would be, you know, if we require any retailer or orphan, or any cultivation, we'd have to be a certain amount of feet away from that. I would just caution, I see kind of a slippery slope of, well, we want to modify, well, we're going to call it, you know, retail space versus building, I think. You know, you're trying to follow the same harm that we have for business uses. We don't call it business space. I, again, it's going to be a special permit. The zoning board would be able to interpret ramifications of retail marijuana operation wanting to go into a, a, a building that's a complex that has other businesses with it. We would consider that, we would deal with that. I don't think you really want to get too far in the weeds of trying to specify things that you're going to box yourself in or create a, a situation that's untenable for the zoning board to deal with. So, I mean, I like the idea, the approach that the planning board has taken here, as far as, you know, removing, you know, marijuana activities from other business uses, and then basically its own section for visit, or marijuana uses. And again, it's going to be under a special permit, and the zoning board would have, you know, would conduct all the hearings, we would investigate all these things, and, you know, I think, you know, in terms of what you want to do, I think this is, I think what the planning board is proposing in terms of the use table is a, you know, is a good way of doing it.
Mr. Moderator.
Thanks for your first point under extensive uses, agricultural or forest, any except cultivation, non-cultivation of marijuana. Doesn't seem like you're allowed, a citizen of Sunderland can't grow marijuana.
By state law, I believe, I don't remember the exact rules, but any person now in the state can grow some limited amount. Cultivation would be an extensive use. Does anybody here know the state rule on how many plants you can grow?
Six plants per person in the household.
Six, yeah. Six, so there we got it. So anybody, anybody is liable?
Our biggest issue is ours.
Now, what I think is a little different here about cultivation is, is you have to understand, the state also has very specific rules about, you know, fencing and protection that require, you know, guarded fences or indoor structures, which become much more like, when you look at Colorado and California, different places, these become much more like industrial complexes. They're not, it's not a field of marijuana growing on the outside of Edward. And they're very intensive because the investment involved, so these are typically run year round at a very high level of use, which is, which was our concern. Those can be quite different from what we think of as, our fields of grain or something.
Do we get a question ready in the background? Yeah.
Governor Unkles, I just wanted to add a piece of information that might not be useful, because I couldn't find it for sure, but I thought the state were included where children gather regularly, in addition to schools and libraries or church.
Okay.
So I couldn't find that for sure in the state.
Okay. Well, certainly we would not supersede anything the state says, we can, we can make it more restrictive. If that, the state already says that, then we're not going to make it less restrictive by not including that language.
You've got agricultural use parcels less than five acres, except cultivation of marijuana. Does that mean that, and you got it as a special permit, does that mean that if I had three or four acres behind my house, and I wanted to use it as agricultural, I'd have to get a special permit?
I believe that by definition, and Steve Crowell can remind me if I've got this wrong, by definition, anything smaller than five acres does not automatically qualify for the state agricultural exemption rules. And so I think that's just, that language, we're leaving out, the language is only except cultivation of marijuana, that language has not changed at all from what's there before, and I believe that's just comporting with what the state says is the fact.
That means if I had four acres, you could move my house to the river, that I'd need a special permit to farm it, the way this reads here. That's kind of bogus.
I don't think I know there are a couple of farms, and I'm sure I don't have a special permit to farm any farms. Now, I think that would be strange, so that might be also a risk.
I think what that comes, what that comes from, and I'll, I'll speak in a general sense, that neighbors of people who have, have a yard and might want, not want their neighbor to be raising pigs, or doing something that they regard as a residential neighborhood or whatever they don't like, that gives them an opportunity to ask the building inspector to, to bring it forward, and then to, as Steve Crowell was just explaining, then there's a special permit before the zoning board to review, and maybe perhaps, maybe come up with restrictions around that. But that's no, that is not a change to existing, existing bylaws. The only added language there is except cultivation of marijuana. So if you want to change that, I invite you to come forward to the planning board and/or the zoning board to discuss, you know, we've at least seen that restriction, but I think some neighbors feel that that's a protection for them from somebody doing something that might make their home property value less, or their enjoyment of their property less.
Anyone else?
My name's Ellie Hertz, I live on Russell Street. I'm just concerned, I appreciate the, all the work that you did to put together these proposed bylaw changes, and I understand the need to be cautious with this, because it is so new to the state, but I just wonder if we're being, and it's hard to know, but I wonder if we're being too restrictive on the cultivation, because we're only allowing it in the C2 district in buildings up to 10,000 square feet. And so that's basically like for the industrial size of growing, but it's my understanding from states like Colorado and out west, that that's like a bare minimum size for industrial size growing. So I think the larger industrial operations wouldn't even be interested in trying to establish something in our C2 district, because it's just not even big enough for, you know, the corporate marijuana companies. So I wonder if like, we're essentially, with the zoning, we're saying, yeah, it's allowed in this district, but we're essentially saying it's not allowed, because I don't think the corporate interest would move in, and I'm not sure it would be affordable or feasible for a smaller company to try to buy land there and cultivate there. And I also feel like with all the, all the rules set in the state laws, with community outreach meetings, and agreements with the town, I wonder if we could make more of it under a special permit, so that we could do a case-by-case review if somebody wanted to cultivate marijuana outside of the C2.
So, so I think the procedure here tonight would be if you wanted to propose, for example, changing, lost my place here, sorry, cultivation of marijuana under business uses, under C1, for no, the special permit, is I think pretty much what you're proposing.
Well, I would say rural residential in C1, because it's in most of our towns rural residential, and C1 is the area of 115.
So I, you know, I'm not going to, so you can't propose that, but I think that might have more impact on people's homes, because that is a residential, that is residential zone, so there are many more homes in that district.
Does it kind of depend on the location though? I mean, there's greenhouses here, not that close to my house, but I could see the lights at night, and it doesn't really bother me, I don't know what it might be.
And, and I think it would depend, you know, personally, I would not want to have lights.
I would say it's a case-by-case review.
Right. You know, so personally, I would not like to see more lights in Sunderland, I like the factory, I have nice dark skies at night, but, you know, so, so I'd welcome you to propose...
Well, I'm all for that too, there's also, and I understand that this part is very new to the regulations, as well as having outdoor facilities, which I know presents other issues of security, but that's another angle to look at it.
I will say that of all the things in the use table that I thought might be proposed for an amendment tonight, I thought C1 turning to a special permit there might be one of them. But I, I don't know, I, I thought people, or maybe rural residential as well, I don't...
Are you concerned by the attorney general on the proof of these, if there is...
We have to begin...
Because that's what my concern is, is that you're not allowing cultivation with this.
I, we passed it by the town attorney, who looked it over and thought, you know, except for some very slight changes wording, thought it was okay. And then, in terms of procedure, town meeting, we can't become more restrictive at town meetings, so we couldn't have put that a special permit and changed our minds to say no at this, at this meeting, that would, that would not be legal. So we, we went with the more restrictive version, and there is the opportunity to, to have an amendment here tonight to make it less restrictive than what is here.
So we're trying to propose an amendment that we change the C2 under cultivation of marijuana.
Excuse me. If you're going to make an amendment, could you please put it in writing? That's, that's, that's better. Motors after a lot of years.
You can't have it from the farm?
No, you can't have that, it's just, just...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The question that Mr. Dickinson had asked about growing five acres of marijuana in his backyard, the, according to this, the CCC, which is a cannabis control commission, has topped off at 100,000 square feet, so you could only grow, so you could only grow 2.3 acres, not, not the five acres.
This, this...
And, and they said they...
Except cultivation of marijuana.
What's that? I didn't hear you, Richard.
It says agricultural use parcel less than five acres, except cultivation of marijuana. So that's, you know, that's...
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to read off of this, and I'm, and I'm just, it says that cannabis control commission had limited to 100,000 square feet. The reason they did that is so that you wouldn't get agribusiness coming in in a grown Massachusetts to sell in other towns.
Right. And I understand that, but my point is, this is, even if I want to grow vegetables on less than five acres, the way this special permit is, because it says except cultivation of marijuana, and I need a special permit. The second one down on the second back of page.
Let me make a clarification, Rick. It's my understanding that we're not changing that part of the existing bylaw. The five acres requiring a special permit is already part of the zoning bylaw. The only thing that we're changing in there is taking marijuana, the ability to grow marijuana out of it. If you have five acres now, or less than five acres, you're still required to get a special permit. That's the way...
That's how the book's that way?
That's how the book's that way.
So, if I, do you want to answer that, Steve?
Well, I just want to actually amplify something that Steve said, you know, that special permit required for agricultural uses for a parcel under five acres has typically been for people who want to have chickens, or maybe horses on their property, properties under five acres. That's, that's where that comes in now. And, you know, I want to also confirm that the wording, like you said, of the agricultural uses, parcel under five acres, that is already, that's in our zoning bylaws now as it is. You're just, the change you're making is just to say, with the exception of cultivation of marijuana. The zoning board is always, I mean, we, we get to deal with some interesting cases, and when we take a look at the law, and we try to interpret them as best we can. You know, I can see the situation you're talking about, about agricultural use of farming actually would require a special permit for a parcel under five acres. Now, the board hasn't taken that point of view, but we've never really had a case brought to us to, that someone's needed a special permit for that. You know, that is its own separate issue, and maybe, I mean, for the purposes of tonight's, you know, what we're trying to do here with generating and adopting some bylaws for marijuana, that, that whole bit, that, the scenario that you point to, I think is outside of that, and that would be like, like Steve was suggesting, if that's something that, you know, the planning board should take a look at, maybe look at the wording of that, that's a separate issue. I think we want to, you know, sort of separate and steer clear of that. That'd be my suggestion.
Mr. Moderator, I may continue. One of the things that I'd like to, sometimes it's hard, but back in 2016, when that was, marijuana question was put before the town, the town voted 70% to change the law to allow for marijuana use and to sell. I mean, I guess you could say that, and a lot, a lot of communities are struggling with the whole issue about the sale of marijuana in the communities, but our residents overwhelmingly voted to support that and use in our community. I would say the one thing with, with the article is that the town, without having an article in place, you are, now subjects will be voted down this evening, then tomorrow someone technically could come in and say they'd like to put up a cultivation center in your backyard, and it could go in. The only, the only thing that would stop that right away, at least, is that the, there's still a host agreement that's worked out with the executive board, in this case, the board of management, so they would come in and we would talk about lighting and all that kind of stuff in the, in the host agreement. From the conversation this evening, it appears that every, that there's concerns with the way that the bylaw is written right now. We always have the option of passing it, and then by either through work by the planning board and/or through a citizen's petition, we can change that law at the annual town meeting or get it. But it's kind of, and personally, just from what's written right there, and I, I have a concern about only limiting it to a gravel pit on Route 63, that's not readily accessible to a lot of people. So I would, I would think that we could do a better job of writing that bylaw to include areas and make the safeguards, proper safeguards in place, so that if someone wanted to put a cultivation center in, the safeguards are theirs. a cultivation center in, the safeguards are there so that we don't have the smell of scum blowing into someone's house next door. So I think there's stuff that we can do, but it's not easy and I think the planning board needed to put something on the books and get us started. I don't, personally, I think it's probably the best solution right now. Probably Steve would probably agree with that, but it allows us to start the conversation. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Move the question?
Well, we have an amendment here. I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can only go down the line, all right?
To propose the amendment is under the section cultivation of marijuana, building up to 10,000 square feet. Change N to SP under the C one zone. So what it's saying is we'd be able to grow marijuana in the C one zone, which if I remember right is basically 116.
Much of 116, basically.
116 from the center of town up to.
No, it's, it's three sections along there, but, but they're.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's building 2,000, 5,000?
This is for cultivation, so this would be.
This is for cultivation of marijuana.
Yeah.
Which, which would take place in a building.
Building up to 10,000 square feet.
Okay, 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 okay. Okay, marijuana.
He's proposing to change it to C one as well.
So that would still require a special permit, which would still require going before the zoning board to review it.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment?
If, Mr. Moderator. Are, if, by the rules that govern this, are you going to allow that amendment?
That's a big jump then.
Yeah, I, I just, it's a moderator's choice.
One of the things in terms of, when it comes to zoning and the moderator's role in the meeting is that generally you are not allowed to make something, well, I guess this is gonna be all right because it's less restrictive, Tom.
I, yeah.
There's two things that govern it. You can't make an amendment that makes it more restrictive.
Uh, he mentioned light this.
Oh, excuse me. You can't make amendments that make an amendment more restrictive. And what you're proposing is actually going to make the zoning bylaw less restrictive. So in that case, the amendment would be allowed. So we're free to discuss the amendment and I saw a number of nens.
Mary, I have one question. Um, C one area, are there residences there? Is it partially residential?
It's partially residential. It's, uh, so, yes, I, I mean, the answer is there are, but it would go before the zoning board and in each instance that one of these were proposed, it would be a large volume. Um, so it would have to be something that we'll look at in each case.
Oh, question. Um, under any regulations yet on the, about space or barriers that need, that are recommended or need to be between residences and the commercial, um, heroin, whatever you're doing.
I, I think any commercial business, uh, has, if you look in the bylaws, there are a lot of, of barrier, barrier issues, lighting issues, a number of things, smell, other things that are all examined by the zoning board already. That's, that's part of the general set of bylaws.
Larry?
Yeah, I'd just recommend at this time, something this has to focus rather than trying to modify it at this point. I think Tom's point that may not be perfect, but it's a good, we're looking for restriction and control of our community. The label assignment would want to loosen it. We can consider it more carefully, I think. Remember, this is the sort of notion it seems in the air, the special permit is, oh, well, we'll stop it there. But as I understand, a special permit isn't where you stop something, it's where you make people put edges around it or control hours of lighting, that sort of thing. It's a bigger step that we may be looking at right now and I think this is a good time just to, uh, respectfully reject this amendment.
I'd like to, oh, this is Jake Valerman, South Silverland. I'd like to agree with your suggestion. And, um, my, my question was, uh, if you could repeat this again with the mo, with the modification or the amendment, so that I can understand exactly where on 116 this is potentially gonna, uh, take place. Because as I imagine 116, there are lots of residences and it's fine if you're not one of those people, but there are a lot of people that may live there that are not here and I don't think it's a good idea to, you know, pass something that's gonna affect them without their knowledge. And then you come back here later, it's, it's, it's a problem that we don't need to create.
Understood. Steve, do you want to, do you want to?
Well, I just want to point out something, uh, you know, you know, you, you sort of implied that, you know, special permits are where we go and suggest edges and stuff like that. You know, special permits can be denied, we have denied. And I'll, I'll tell you that the, the zoning board is very much concerned about business and commercial uses where there are budding residences. So, uh, you know, this, this, this is to say that, uh, special permits, you know, are not imagined here and negotiates a lot of expression, a lot of concern. Uh, one of the things, one of the criteria we look at is the impact on the neighborhood. Uh, and if there's budding residences, and I mean, we've had situations where we've had, you just get a special smoke or gas station on, on 116. Uh, and there are budding residences behind that Silverland. So, uh, we, you know, there's, uh, and I'm just saying that there's a lot of circumstances where there are, you know, residences nearby or commercial metrics are, are suggested. So.
That's all. If I could just make a clarification, somebody asked where the C one is. My recollection is that the C one, three sections, from the center of town or from the bridge really, up this way to about where we are at the school. The second section is down where the shops are, uh, the dogs nest and all of that. And then the third set is basically from Plum Trees Road south to the town line. And I can't remember what the setback is, whether they're 300 feet from the road or 500 feet.
But what I'd also point out is currently it is possible by special permit to build any 10,000 square foot retail, um, building or, or building in that, that same C one district, but it would against require a special permit. So, uh, putting up a, an agricultural 10,000 square foot building with proper safeguards against smell and lighting and other things is not much different from what is currently allowed in zoning. Like you put up, uh, um, a retail business of 10,000 square feet with a special permit.
I'd also point out that, uh, retail store, uh, building greater than 2,000 and up to 5,000 is a yes in, uh, commercial one and commercial two, not even a special permit. So in those situations where, uh, the, you know, there may be residences nearby, the, the bylaws and the use table as it is now allows as a yes, a retail store that's between 2,000 and 5,000 square feet. But what we're suggesting here for a marijuana retailer, we're actually going to put a, you know, special permit on, and you're gonna have more control, so, uh, you know, this, you know, the conflict between commercial businesses and residential businesses, uh, I mean, that's, that's, that's sort of, you know, age long and, uh, you know, zoning board deals with them and, you know, so.
Well.
Yeah, I, I would just agree with the other ideas about not voting in favor of the amendment, but encourage the, a person who's offering the amendment to go to the planning board with the idea, it's a wonderful board, they really hash through things, uh, and then public can come and interact with them and get some feedback. And then any kind of changes to this, uh, use table could be presented by the planning board, um, after having a lot of discussion over it, working things out, thinking about things and sort of role-playing, scenario-playing, come up with all kinds of surprises when you do that.
You know, and I can't, and I think this thing would fly through, but after listening to everybody and the discussion that's going on, I, I think we need a lot more information on the whole thing. And what, what the planning board's trying to do tonight is to, is at least get something on the books. And then, like, like the other two gentlemen have said, then we can go back and relook at it and discuss it further. And I think we need a lot more input from the townspeople on it, because this is just a small, hard people concern. So, you know, as, as far as the amendment goes, you know, I think we should defeat the amendment, look at it afterwards so we can get a whole bigger picture of what's going on, what these facilities might look like, um, you know, and, and what the concerns of, you know, of others, present facilities that are growing at half. And then we can be, have a more informed discussion and a more, make a more informed decision. And, and.
Neil Schwor, South Silverland. I agree with what you just said about, um, not supporting that amendment because I think there's a potential for a lot of unintended consequences that are not clear to us yet. And, um, at the same time, I, I don't know, I'd be curious to know what the intention is with the time of amendment.
The reason why you proposed the amendment?
Yeah, I, when, and I, I have a lot of, you know, mixed feelings about the legalization of marijuana in the state in the first place, but when I looked at the regulations and I thought about it, it seemed like we're not allowing cultivation at all. And I know that under, because we passed marijuana legalization, our town voted for marijuana legalization, we have to allow these things in our town without, or we have to jump through a lot of hoops for banning it. So I feel like we're basically not allowing cultivation, but putting it into one small district and limiting it in size. So I feel like this allows us to, at least we're saying it is, we would allow cultivation if we allowed this amendment. And I feel like it's still strict enough under the special permit. As other speakers have noted, the special permit takes a lot of factors into consideration. And if you take a look at zoning for the bylaws, there are a lot of things under there that maybe you wouldn't want to have, um, that's the, maybe you would want to have near you or insert areas along 116, but they are technically allowable. So this would be just adding one more of those to consider.
Moderator, I'd like to move the question on the amendment.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to move the vote on the amendment, which means that since it's been made and seconded, that we have no choice but to vote on it.
To vote on the amendment?
On the amendment, just the amendment.
Could we stand it, please?
And the amendment as read basically indicates that we want to move cultivation to, to allow it in C one as well as C two. So.
By special, special. By special.
By special permit, right. Okay. Again, this is gonna require a two-thirds vote to pass. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'm gonna declare it doesn't pass by voice vote. Okay, I think that one of the things that you should do is take the suggestion that was made and take a look at it, have input into the planning board so that if you're going to revise it, then we're gonna have a much more comprehensive, uh, permit process than we now have. Okay, are we ready to vote on the main motion?
Yes.
Okay, the main motion is basically what has been presented in the handout. Okay, all those in favor of accepting the amendments to the bylaws as presented in the handout, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, I'll declare a passage of amendments.
Well, there was one nay, that doesn't make it unanimous.
I have the prerogative, I have the prerogative of not doing it. Otherwise, we have to count.
I don't think that's fair.
Okay, Article four. Mr. Moderator, would you like to move Article four?
Second.
The motion's made and seconded for Article four. Explanation.
Mr. Moderator, according to Mass General Law, Chapter 64 and Section 3, cities in town by the, uh, town meeting vote, in our case, a town meeting vote, can put an excise tax up to 3% on the, uh, selling of marijuana in the town of Sunderland. It's a sales tax, basically a sales tax.
Uh, if you're following what's happening in the towns around us, when it comes to imposition of this sales tax, most of the towns have imposed the sales tax on it. In Amherst, they've actually gone further and proposed that every person that's granted a license to sell retail marijuana also has to kick in $25,000 per year to, to the town to be used for educational purposes related to the use of marijuana. Uh, the question that I would have with the Board of Selectmen, even though I'm probably stepping out of line here a little bit, is why has not the town of Sunderland opted to go that route?
Mr. Moderator, that would be, uh, subject to what they call the, uh, the host, host community negotiation that would be carried out.
Okay, so if somebody comes to you with a, requesting a license, you could impose that educational fee so on and at that point?
We could negotiate that, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion on Article four?
Valerman, South Silverland, have one question. Is it that 3% is the maximum that we said we could to?
Yes, sir. Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay.
Question, um, would that money come directly to the town?
It does. It goes to the, what they call the general, the town's general fund.
It's no different than like the hotels and the extra meals taxes. It's exactly like that.
All right. All those in favor of Article four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those nay, declare a passage of amendments. Article six.
Mr. Moderator, would you like to?
Article five.
Article five, excuse me. Second for Article five. Okay, that's pretty self-explanatory. Where does the additional cost come in?
Mr. Moderator, the Franklin County Technical School has. Mr. Moderator, the Franklin County Technical School has put together a capital, a capital program, um, and then when we put the budget together, this is one of the things that was, uh, held over. We thought it was in their, their full budget, but not. So at this time, we're coming back to ask for the appropriation, they put in nine thousand seven hundred eight dollars or fifty-eight cents for capital improvements and they have a, a long-term plan of that, the, the textbook.
Okay. Any discussion?
Is this a one-time assessment or is this an ongoing capital assessment that they'll be, that'll be on the warrant every year? Two thousand thirty-four?
All those in favor of Article five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, declare it unanimous. Article six. Mr. Moderator, would you like to move Article six, please?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Uh, available funds. Where's the available funds? Six thousand from free cash. From free cash? Yeah, that's right. Okay.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, please, uh, basically Massachusetts, um, this year is joining the rest of the country, believe it or not. Um, up until this time, Massachusetts, uh, they had a Department of Labor that enforced through municipality and state, higher education, et cetera, they had our own, we had our own set of rules. Uh, Massachusetts now has adopted the OSHA standards, so we're going by OSHA standards. The, the fire chief discussed with us, um, a few times, it appears that there are, more of OSHA requirements is that there's a one-time physical that is firefighters, um, active firefighters need to take. At this time, we have ten firefighters that would need to have this physical. There's only two places, I believe, in the state that offer the physical, and each physical costs about six hundred dollars. There's a conversation that would have, um, we had a, a meeting, a conversation on a meeting, but about a conversation with the person from the Department of Labor, they said they don't really know if it's actually mandatory at this time or not. Our fire chief, Steve Benjamin, has gotten many different opinions. I think he's gotten four different opinions if he had or should have or not, and it has to be done by February first. So at this time, we would like to keep the six thousand dollars in the line. If Stephen needs to, uh, send his firefighters to the, to the physical, he will have the money to do it. If not, if it can be done at a later time, he'll have the money to do it. If they don't have to do it at all, he can turn the money in. But we think it's a proven way to go appropriate the six thousand dollars if those firefighters need that. We, we're actually, our board has said, why, why are we only doing it once? Why is it done every year? But, um, that, that's for another discussion.
Okay. Any discussion?
So Bob, does the article now say six thousand dollars for free cash or does it say a sum of money from available funds?
It's written as a sum of money.
So, thank you, Liz. What, at this time, I'd like to make an amendment to the article, and the sum of money, I'd like to make it six thousand dollars, and it would be from free cash.
Second. Thank you, Liz. The motion's made and seconded to change the sum of money to six thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, now we can vote on the main motion. Okay, all those in favor of Article seven as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, unanimous. Article eight. We're on six. We gotta go to seven. Oh, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I wrote it down wrong here. Article seven.
I, I, um, Mr. Moderator, would you like to, uh, pass over Article seven at this time?
Okay, we're passing over that. No action?
Correct.
Article eight. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article eight.
Second.
Five thousand some odd dollars for cash for the senior center. Any discussion?
Mr. Rock Moderator, if I may, please, ba, basically, we had a, the, uh, we have a complete accounting long overdue at the senior center. Presently, uh, the, the senior center total budget is about fifty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars, give or take a few cents. Um, and Deerfield pays fifty percent and Whiteley and Sunderland, um, divide up the other twenty-five percent of these. After, again, we were looking at how, how the senior center is funded. We were funding, we were funding through many, many, um, state and local federal grants that unfortunately are no longer, they're no longer, we can depend on those happening. So what, what we did, and also we found out that there are certain things, like the, uh, senior center directors' health and, um, life insurance were not carried in the budget, so the town of Deerfield was having to pick up the whole thing. I was not opposed to that. I thought Deerfield would be nice, present in the town of Sunderland, but the residents of Deerfield don't agree with me, unfortunately. Um, so, and we also, we have a position, it's called an outreach position. It's a, a twelve-hour position that was funded solely through grants. We, we believe the Board of Oversight that the outreach is a critical, um, position at the senior center to, to get out in the community to, and not only to, to talk to people about what we do, but there, there's a, a segment of our population that needs assistance that they can't get to the senior center. So we wanted to, we wanted to bring that in line also. So after, after the, uh, what began the counting and the whole process and think that we're missing, um, we found out that the town of Sunderland, Whiteley needed to, to only have an additional five thousand dollars. So our assessment would be a little over eighteen thousand dollars for the seniors. Uh, Whiteley would be eighteen thousand, and the town of Deerfield would pick up thirty-six thousand. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion? Okay, all those favored in Article eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article nine. Mr. Moderator, would you like to move Article nine?
Second.
Some new geothermal pumps for the Sunderland Public Library. Any discussion?
Catherine Hand, Director of the Sunderland Public Library. Um, this is funds are to, um, to pay for repairs that already have been done to the Sunderland Public Library's, um, geothermal pumps and then the HVAC system. We were very grateful to receive a grant from Sunderland Energy Committee's Green Communities Grant to pay for a building automation system in the library, which really simplified the maintenance and understanding of how each of the sixteen heat pumps in the library actually work. Um, however, this initial project did not include the geothermal pumps that actually power the heat pumps. And so, um, throughout 2018, we had a series of total system failures with our HVAC system. Um, and ultimately, it was discovered that the programming of the system was essentially the geothermal pumps and the heat pumps were coming back online at the same time. We should not give enough time for the geothermal pumps to actually get anything pumped into the heat pumps, which were shutting them all down. So essentially, we needed these funds in order to, number one, add the geothermal pumps onto the monitoring system so I know what's happening with them and that they're functioning correctly. And number two, to reprogram the system so that the geothermal pumps have enough time to power up and then the heat pumps can then, um, do their thing. Happy to answer any questions?
Could you tell me what a VFD is?
It's one of those mechanisms. They're air and can in the back, actually.
It's a variable, variable frequency drive.
Controls the speed of the pumps.
It allows a motor that can run from zero to thirty-six hundred or zero to eighteen hundred RPM. It allows the, uh, pump and motor to operate in its, in its most efficient, uh, RPM. So it doesn't need to be at the eighteen hundred or thirty-six hundred, it runs at fifteen hundred or twelve hundred. So it gives the best, it gives the best efficiency of that pump.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of Article nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, before we adjourn, thank you all for coming out and thank all the boards for their input and the planning board for taking the time to put this together.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator?
Take.
The motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Moderator, would you like to make a motion to dissolve?